Well, good morning, everyone, and welcome to the December meeting of the Austin P Board of Trustees. It's a pleasure to have all of our visitors and certainly all the board members. And Dr. White, thank you for being here. Danell. Before we kick off the actual program, let me start with a couple of things. One is really important, and that's please help me congratulate Crystal Willenius, our student trustee, on being accepted this morning to dental school at Utah. So, well done. Kind of a big deal, so congratulations. Another congratulations, I think, is in order. Our athletics director, Ryan Ivies, in the back, and certainly congratulations to you, Ryan, and the whole university for the athletic success that you've had this fall. As we all know, the Lady Goves are playing in the NCAA tournament for volleyball, playing UCLA in Los Angeles this evening. So, I actually do have the website, if you want to watch it on your computer. It's pack-12.com/live, so you can watch the Lady Goves upset UCLA this evening. And then certainly, the excitement and Cinderella story of the football team has been terrific and has really brought this campus even more together than it was before, so congratulations on that success. And at this time, we'll call the roll. Secretary, please.
Trustee Atkins.
Present.
Trustee Canada. Trustee Carroll.
Present.
Trustee Jenkins.
Present.
Trustee Luck.
Present.
Trustee May.
Present.
Trustee Miller.
Present.
Trustee O'Malley.
Present.
Trustee Rayburn.
Present.
Trustee Willenius.
Present.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Please note that there are items on your agenda that need to be adopted. Before I call for a vote, are there any items that you wish to be extracted from the consent Hearing none, I move for the adoption of the agenda, including the consent agenda items. Is there a second?
I second.
Moved and seconded by Trustee Rayburn. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The agenda is adopted. The minutes for the September 15th board meeting were circulated in advance of the meeting. Are there any corrections or additions to the minutes? Trustee Jenkins moves to approve. Do I hear a second? Seconded by Trustee Carroll. All in favor of approving the minutes signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes are approved. And at this time, I'd like to recognize President White, who will introduce Tennessee State Treasurer David H. Lillard, Jr.
I'm really pleased today that Treasurer Lillard and Assistant Treasurer Joy Harris are with us here today. We talked a lot yesterday about how money flows in Tennessee, and we really are fortunate that our financial position in Tennessee is much healthier in terms of things that affect higher education, large institutions and organizations that have heavy retirement obligations, have heavy capital needs. But you can read his bio, the board members have a little bit of information about the Treasury in your packets, but I wanted to mention just a couple really, a couple of quick things before Treasurer comes up. So, I moved to Tennessee, back to Tennessee in 2014, and I had been in one state for many years that operated a little bit differently in terms of capital projects and how appropriations went through from the state level to the institutions. And so, I had some questions. And I asked, I was talking to Speaker Pro Tem Curtis Johnson, who's also an Austin P alum, and just asking him some questions, and he said, "Well, let me, let me take you to meet the Treasurer." And, and I had been in Texas a long time, and that was the first time that anybody had ever said, "Let me take you to meet the Treasurer." And we walked in and sat down and chatted for a few minutes, and that same day, I met the comptroller, Justin Wilson, and the Secretary of State, Trey Hargit. The fact that a president could have access like that to state leaders is pretty rare. A few months later, I had some questions about the State Building Commission and some things that I needed done here, and I just didn't understand how we could get done what we needed to get done. And so, again, I asked if, if I could, could talk with the folks who were sitting at the table, and I showed up with, with Speaker Pro Tem Johnson, and there was a room, about 20% of this room, that in it was Treasurer Lillard, Comptroller Wilson, Secretary of State, Hargit, the state architect, and about 17,000 other staff members who wanted to know what we needed and how they worked and what they could do to help. And, and I groped a little bit about a few things, and they listened. And, but my whole point is, we have people in Tennessee who are willing to work with us to get done what we need to get done. And so, I asked the Treasurer to come and just explain to the board how money flows in Tennessee, because you'll be making decisions on behalf of the university, but as you make those decisions, you have to know what the options are. What, what is the likelihood that we can get support for this capital project? How healthy are we in our retirement obligations? So, I asked him to come and just give you an idea of the health of the Treasury in Tennessee and then their relationship with, with the university. And I'll finish by saying, he's also a member of the Tennessee Higher Education Commission as well as a member of, of the State Building Commission. Treasurer Lillard.
Thank you, Dr. White and members of the board.
Thank you, more Dr. White and members of the board for the opportunity to speak to you today, and I want to say too that Dr. White is well-respected in the state Capitol, well-known there, as she indicated, and has stood up many times for Austin P and has done an excellent job of representing the university. And I also want to thank each of you for your service on this board, because that takes time and effort and all to do that, and it's very, very important in terms of advancing excellence in higher education in Tennessee. Dr. White alluded to, the State Treasurer is a constitutional officer of the state. Also, the State Treasurer serves on or chairs 28 boards and commissions of the state, including the Higher Education Commission and the State Building Commission and others that deal directly with higher education and all. So, I'm integrally involved along with my other colleagues and senior state government in promoting higher education in our state. I am blessed by the Lord to have three college degrees, all of them from public universities, and so, I'm a big believer in public higher education, and I think I support the mission that, that Austin P is on here. On the slides that we have here, we're going to start off by looking at a little bit about what Tennessee Treasury does and everything, just to give you an idea, because most people don't fully understand that. As we point out on slide number two here, Treasury manages and oversees about $66 billion in assets. We have internal management of about $45 billion on any given day, and we have administration and investment oversight of another $21 billion in investments. The largest of those is the Tennessee Retirement Group Trust that has the funds from the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System in it, along with other funds, which is approximately $47 billion, and it's a fund that's invested basically in all asset classes, as we said. Majority of it is managed internally by our own personnel. As we point out on slide number two here, our in-house staff, we have a staff of 34 investment professionals, including 14 chartered financial analysts and other professional designations. We have other personnel that have graduate degrees in economics and finance and other areas. This sets us apart from most other state treasurers across the nation. Most state treasurers, in fact, all state treasurers, are custodians of the state's funds by law or by constitutional provision in their state, but the vast majority of them do not actually manage that money on a day-to-day basis. They send it to the outside, to outside advisors, and that's something that we do in part in the Treasury Department, but we have a tradition of internally managing the vast majority of our funds internally. And the reason we've done that is because it saves a lot of money for the state and everything, while at the same time, being able to achieve the same returns that our peers would achieve, and it benefits all state programs, including Austin P and higher education in general, to do that. On slide number three, the Tennessee Treasury Department manages investments for the Tennessee Promise Trust, $463.1 million, and we were involved with the governor in formulating that program to support programs in community colleges and the TCATs that ultimately feed into Austin P's programs and everything. We manage investments for the State Pool Investment Fund of about $8.2 billion. We manage the local government investment pool for $3.06 billion. This is, in effect, the short-term money market fund for state government. It's a situation where we manage idle cash largely in government securities or agency securities of the United States, and we operate the 10-Stars College Savings Program, a 529 program, that has about $107 million in assets in it currently. We began this program from scratch back in 2013 with zero assets, and these few years later, we have $107 million. The program serves over 10,000 Tennessee families, and of course, some of those students, no doubt, attend Austin P as well and other sister institutions in Tennessee. On slide number four, the Treasury Department also manages investments for the Chairs of Excellence Fund, that funds endowed chairs of excellence at higher education institutions across the state. We have four chairs at Austin P, and that is a fund that has $329.1 million in it, and is an important thing, I think, in advancing quality and excellence in higher education. It's a program that, again, it's like most of our programs, it's like the pension fund, the large portion of the monies that are paid out of the program come from investment earnings that the Treasury Department earned on the market. So, it's an extender, if you will, for tax dollars and for private contributions that are made to that program and other programs. Some of the other services that Treasury does, Treasury has about 300 employees total in Tennessee, and so, we manage a wide array of state programs. Some of those are, in addition to the local government investment pool I've spoken at before, the defined benefit program, the Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System, the deferred compensation programs, the 401K and 457 plans of the state, and what's known as the Optional Retirement Program, largely for higher education, for those faculty members and others that are exempt from the Fair Labor Standards Act, who wish to opt out of being in the TCRS and wish to be in a defined contribution program known as the ORP. As we said, we run the Chairs of Excellence Program. One thing that most people don't recognize, though, on slide five, is that we run the Workers' Compensation Program for the state, the tort property insurance and cyber liability programs for the state as well. If you look on slide number six here, the Division of Claims and Risk Management for the, for the Department of Treasury self-insures its exposures and provides services to the state in these three major areas that I described before. It also includes property insurance and insurance programs related to that. For instance, if an Austin P motor vehicle is involved in an accident, that's a Treasury Department matter in Tennessee, because we adjudicate the claim. You can, of course, take the claim to Independent Claims Commissioners or to the Tennessee Claims Commission that I chair if it's need to be done that way, but we adjudicate that program as well, and it's very extensive. On slide number seven, this shows you a little bit of some of the emphasis that we've had during my nine years as Treasurer. We've attempted to do several things, one of which is to more economically and efficiently administer our programs and achieve savings for our partners. We view Austin P and other higher education institutions as our partners in government, and so, accordingly, it's important for us to serve you in a way that saves you money and also efficiently performs the program. On slide number seven, we point out that over the last year, from FY 2016 to fiscal year 2017, we've had significant reductions in your costs in the workers' compensation area, in the claims area, in the medical payments area. As you can see there in those numbers that are on there, we've instituted a return-to-work program in workers' comp that has saved significant money. We've also worked various programs to reduce liabilities and reduce costs to our constituent institutions in all of these areas. So, that's an important fact. On slide number eight, in terms of property and insurance, we insure a lot of different types of property, either through the self-insurance pool of the fund or, of fund of the state, or through selected additional insurance coverages for fine arts, cyber liability, fidelity and crime, terrorism coverage, and also excess earthquake coverage as well. These are mundane areas, but they're mundane areas that can cost you a lot of money if they're not administered well, and also can be an important factor at a time when you have a claim and need service with respect to that. In terms of further savings from property and insurance, on slide number nine, Austin P had five claims over the last three years resulting in $975,000 placed in reserves, Treasury's verified payment of $475,710, and we're still reviewing other potential payments from those funds. We paid $91,500 in deductibles and a potential savings of $884,000 in property loss from the programs that we administer. On slide number 10, just to talk about retirement just a minute, this is, of course, the retirement program is the largest program that we administer in Treasury, and we do both the administrative side of that, just keep the member records and make the payments, et cetera, and also, as we described earlier, we do the investment side of it well, as well. The Tennessee Consolidated Retirement System has a legacy plan that provides a DB benefit. It's a lifetime annuity-type benefit based on a formula of average final compensation times your years of service accrual factor and all. For those employees that were hired after July 1, 2014, we have the new hybrid plan with cost controls. This is a further example during the last nine years of things that we have done during my tenure to reduce exposure in terms of costs and expenses to our constituent institutions while also supplying a meaningful benefit to employees of the state, whether in higher ed or elsewhere. And basically, the hybrid plan has cost controls on it, where the employer's cost is capped at 9% of payroll and the employee's cost is 7% of payroll, and it will not change over time. Most defined benefit plans, as you know, have a problem with respect to the possibility of increasing costs over time. In addition, unfunded liabilities, which now under the GASB pronouncements, the Governmental Accounting Standards Board pronouncements, have to be included on your balance sheet as a liability item. We also run the 401K and 457 plans of the state, which are about a $3.5 billion item for state employees. Some higher ed support employees participate in that plan as well. And as I pointed out, the Optional Retirement Program earlier is for those largely faculty members who are not covered by the Fair Labor Standards Act can opt out of the TCRS and opt into the ORP. We have about $3.6 billion in that program, and of course, many Austin P personnel participate in that. If you look at, on slide 11, the TCRS is a holistic matter. It covers 217,000 active members in the state, including state and higher education employees, K-12 teachers, and local government entities that elect to participate. We have over 500 local government entities, that's cities, counties, utility districts, et cetera. We pay about $2.4 billion in retirement benefits to more than 136,000 retired members each year out of the Treasury Department. 92% of that is paid in Tennessee, so 92% of that money stays in the state of Tennessee. And of that money that we pay out, of every $100, about $65, or about 65% of all retirement payments are funded from investment earnings earned by the Treasury Department on the market. It's not funded by taxpayer dollars or by your budget dollars or by employee contributions. So, that's a significant injection into the economy. If you look at the amount of money we pay in each of the 95 counties of the state, it's a large industry payroll equivalent relative to the population size of every county in the state. So, it's a significant factor that benefits Austin P and other institutions as well. We are one of the top five best-funded state pension plans in the country. S-Standard and Poor's recently issued a report confirming that again. We've had that status for some years, which is quite a feat in today's world in and of itself. One of it is because Tennessee has always had the financial discipline to fully fund the actuarial requirement for the retirement plan every year. Every General Assembly and every governor since at least 1972, when the modern system was consolidated, has done that. Many other states have scrimped on those payments, and that's gotten them into trouble in additioning to having, having less-than-vibrant investment function involved. On slide number 12, the DC plans that we talked about, the 401K and 457, that's over 130,000 members, state and education, higher education employees, K-12 teachers, and local government entities that participate. We have over 250 local government entities in it, as I said, about $3 billion in assets and everything. We have, we take very seriously in this regard, the matter of fiduciary duty. This is an issue that's come to the fore recently in regard to defined contribution plans, where we rigorously, every quarter, sit down and look at every investment option to make sure it is performing in accordance with, at least in accordance with, an applicable benchmark that's been assigned to it. If it is not, then it is put on negative watch and ultimately mapped out of the system. We also look at fees and expenses regularly and renegotiate contracts when necessary to ensure that our employees, whether higher ed or state or wherever, local government, they're getting the best possible deal. On slide 13, we have 9,300 participants in the higher education side of the ORP and everything. You know, it's a situation where you can choose, it says at the bottom of this, from three vendors, from TIA, from Valic, and Voyer, your three choices on that. On slide number 14, again, the hybrid plan, it discusses that a little bit. I've gone over most of these items here today and everything. On slide number 15, with respect to the ORP, it tells you the contributions for that particular plan for those faculty members you may have that have opted into that. And on slide number 16, this shows you the number of participants that you have in the hybrid plan, in the legacy plan of TCRS, and also in the ORP here at Austin P. So, you have a number of people who do participate in those plans. One thing I want to talk about today just briefly is on slide 17, and that is our legislative initiative with respect to this year's General Assembly that's upcoming, just to bring you up to date. The ORP plan is a good one that we have, as we mentioned. Many states have a program similar to the ORP plan. One requirement that we have here in Tennessee in our state law with respect to the ORP requires your faculty member, when he or she retires or whatever, to annuitize 50% of the proceeds in that, in that account. That is an area that I've heard the most about over my tenure as Treasurer from faculty members and others who are involved in this, is an area that they question why we need to do that. This used to be 100% requirement years ago, I'm told, back in the 1980s, when the ORP was begun, but the legislature reduced it to 50% several, some years ago. We are going to propose to the General Assembly to eliminate that in this year's General Assembly and hope to have that enacted. Also, the current state law requires that the state have at least two, but no more than three, ORP vendors, and I won't get into the total detail of all this now because of time constraints, but the bottom line is, we believe that it should be changed to allow the, the Treasury Department, as the sponsor of this, in a procurement, to select one or to select two or three vendors, whatever is in the best interest of the participants of the plan, rather than being guided by a mandatory requirement as to the number that we have. As you know, on fiduciary duty principles, we are required, under applicable concepts of law, to operate this program for the benefit, for the sole benefit of its enrollees and not for anybody else's benefit, and that is inconsistent with it. The last thing that we're going to propose to the General Assembly, we talk about here on slide 17, is there are 403B plans, which is another type of defined contribution plan that have been maintained historically by the Board of Regents at the board level and also by the University of Tennessee at the system level for the UT system. You have some people in, at Austin P who participate in that. Those boards have been the sponsors of those. We feel it's more appropriate to have that managed by the Treasury Department of the state, because again, you know, each of you and, and your faculty and your administration, as well as those in the UT system, et cetera, your full-time job is to educate people and supply the workforce needs of the states, et cetera. Ours is to manage money and manage programs like this, and so, accordingly, I think the enrollees would benefit from that sort of change as well. So, you may hear some things about that as we progress through this, but we'd love to talk at any time that Dr. White or the faculty thinks it's important with your faculty members about that, if they have any questions. Slide 18 just goes over the basic things that I pointed out in regard to fiduciary duty of all of these plans, whether you're talking about the DB plan, the DC plans, et cetera. On slide 18 and slide 19, we go through some of the factors that you should consider in fiduciary duty. The biggest one, of course, as I said, is you manage the plan solely for the benefit of the enrollees and for no one else, really, basically. One last thing I want to discuss here on slide number 20 is participant financial education. This is another large initiative that we have in the Treasury Department, and all of our plans is to educate Tennessee's populace, and particularly government employees that are participating in these plans or higher ed employees, as to financial literacy, financial wellness, and retirement readiness. Financial literacy is not just a one-legged stool, it's really all three of those. And Tennessee is, has an outsized reputation in terms of our economy, the size of our economy as a state, the number of people that we have, et cetera. In terms of our financial standing, we have a triple-triple-A bond rating. We are one of the 15 states in the nation that have that. We have a top-five best-funded pension plan. Just go on and on. We have a balanced budget each and every year, all of these things. But one thing we are not proud of in Tennessee is we are the number-one state in the Union and checked in the last six months or so, but I believe we still have this distinction, unfortunately, of number-one state in the Union per capita of wage earner bankruptcies, that is, Chapter 13 bankruptcy proceedings, and it indicates the level of financial preparedness that our general population in this state has, and it's a sad state. So, we need to work on this. The legislature charged us with this responsibility, and we enacted the hybrid plan in 2013 that became effective in 2014, and we have rolled out a number of things as part of this. When I first came to the Treasury Department nine years ago, you couldn't get in-person counseling in the retirement system anywhere but in the Andrew Jackson State Office Building in Nashville. So, if you're from Austin P, you had to drive there to get it. You could do telephone counseling, but not in person, and we offered no real analysis of retirement assets as such, other than what was in our own plan and everything. We have changed that totally in the Treasury Department. We now have field service throughout the state. We have representatives who cover this region of the state, and you can get an appointment with a counselor in your home county within a maximum of 30 days. It's usually a lot less than that, like 15 days or so, so you can do that. We actively conduct group meetings here on campus, both in the DC plan and in the DB plan, and do those things. And also, we have a certified financial planner in each grand division of the state who will meet with people from that grand division and design a financial plan for you if you want to do that. That can include non-governmental plan assets, if necessary, to help you prepare for being financially well and also being retirement-ready. On slide 21, it gives a few of the statistics here. In the last fiscal, in this fiscal year, we've conducted 10,491 one-on-one counseling sessions. We've conducted 1,272 group meetings. So, we're making a significant effort, you know, in that regard. I'll comment on THEC and, and in regard to higher education funding. I have seen it all in the time period that I've been Treasurer for nine years. When I came here, January 15, 2009, it was at the depths of the Great Recession, and it was a tough time in that regard. And it was a tough time in terms of the state budget. We cut the budget significantly and everything during those periods, and that included support for higher education. One thing we've done, of course, as y'all are well aware, is created the outcomes-based formula, and last year, and last year's budget, that was fully funded. Austin P has benefited from that, as well as our higher education institutions throughout the state. I continue to be a big supporter of higher education, particularly public higher education in our state. I think it's essential for our workforce needs, and I think it's essential that the Treasury Department be your close partner in achieving the goals that you need to achieve for Austin P State University and the students that you serve. And in that regard, I think one thing that we, you know, all need to be concerned about is all revenues are cyclical in government. That's just the necessary evil of how it works, and right now, we're doing very well in regard to our revenue sources in Tennessee and have been for some years, but there will be a time when that will tighten up and all that. So, I know as you go through your programs, use some of the savings that we're able to generate and help us generate more for you, but, you know, do things that are necessary to try to plan for the future in regard to that. So, I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have at this point. So I'd be happy to entertain any questions that you may have at this point.
I don't know how much time we have, and I'm not even sure how this would necessarily affect what we're doing here at Austin P. But I, just looking at Clarksville, and I, I think if you took it statewide, you'd find the same thing, but we, we seem to be the king of strip malls. And people that set up a business in strip malls, it's a revolving door. If you go down through the city, you see something open and close. Is there, and it leads to Chapter eleven of bankruptcies. Is there anything, and I, I recognize our requirement to educate people that are going into a small business, but how about regulations from the state? The capacity to get a license to open a business? Should we kind of get on that side of it too, rather than on the backside of it? That's just a thought I had.
Pull that mic closer, Dr. Luck. Pull that mic closer to you. Thank you, just for the audience.
Well, I think you're right to point that out, that support for small business is a very big factor, you know, in your economy. Small business is a huge factor in gross domestic product, and support for that is very, very important. You know, our legislature has been very involved in trying to, and in fact accomplishing, slashing regulation for businesses. My family, I grew up in a small business family myself. My father is a doctor of pharmacy that operated a small drugstore chain in Memphis, and I worked for years as his chief financial officer when I was in undergraduate school. And so, you know, from that standpoint, I've lived that and know it, and I think in addition to the good education that Austin P. and other higher education institutions do in that area, there's a need for government to recognize the difficulties of sustaining that sector of our economy. And I think Tennessee's done a good job in that regard, so. Any other questions? Anything else?
Well, I'll, I'll comment. You know, I'm, I'm around the business, have three CFAs and nineteen CFPs in the office, obviously a much smaller scale, but I really congratulate you on having built the internal infrastructure to manage the money. You do save the state of Tennessee and, and its constituents a tremendous amount of money by doing that, and most people shy away from the responsibility. I think most states do. So I, I think Tennessee's a real beneficiary of that, and I congratulate you on what you've built in that, that area.
Well, thank you, Mr. Carroll. I, I just want to say too, that, that we have a great relationship with and work closely with the advisory community in Tennessee. They're great partners for what we're doing, because you're just like financial literacy and wellness and retirement readiness, the need is so vast in that area. Yes, I'm sure you spend a lot of your professional time educating clients on that, and the need is so vast that everybody needs to put their shoulder to the wheel, and we're happy to do our part in that regard. And, you know, and just like, we're glad to bring the savings that we're able to accomplish by managing money and managing these programs, all of which are basically financial programs in-house, to Austin P. to allow you to accomplish your goals. So glad to work within that regard. And I want to introduce Joy Harris, Assistant Treasurer, right up here on the front row. She heads the Financial Empowerment Division, which deals with the college savings program, with our defined contribution plans, et cetera. So she's the person who deals with this area most often.
Well, thank you for the fascinating spotlight on what the Department of Treasury does in our state and how it relates to, to Austin P. And, and as a Tennessee resident, I appreciate, similar to what Larry was saying, the great job that you all do in managing our finances in the state. And thank both you and Joy for coming up here today to Clarksville to visit with us. We appreciate it.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll just close by saying, I forgot to mention, we also run an intern program in the Treasury Department. We've had interns, students from Austin P. in the past, and always welcome them, they're always well-prepared, so.
Great.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. And now I'd like to introduce, or reintroduce, Dr. White, who's going to introduce individuals from our outstanding ROTC program for a campus spotlight.
We have a, we have a rock star at the table. I, I have to say, I'm so proud of Lieutenant Colonel Montgomery and his group with ROTC. I've been here again just a few months when he came to see me and explained how our ROTC program operates, and that's what he's going to do for you today. But what I was so struck by at that meeting, and I have never forgotten it, is the core values that guide and frame the work of the ROTC program. So he's going to tell you of their, their accomplishments, I won't steal that thunder, but I'm incredibly proud of what they do. And I know there is at least one board member who's very familiar with their work, and that, of course, is, is General Mueller, who was also a professor of military science here at one time. And so I would just turn it over to the professor and chair of Military Science, Lieutenant Colonel John Montgomery.
Thank you, ma'am, and members of the board, President White. Thank you very much for letting me have a few moments of your time today to speak on behalf of Austin P. State University's Military Science Program. I've, I've been with the program about three years. It's an absolute honor to serve there. And I really wanted to take, you know, fifteen minutes or so today and help educate the board members on, on what we do within the Military Science Program, otherwise known as Austin P. ROTC. The bottom line is that we produce leaders, and leaders who will ultimately serve our Army. But one of my, my greatest responsibilities is how do we help them serve while they're here on campus, whether that be on campus, whether that be in the surrounding community. So that's something we take very seriously, and I just kind of wanted to start with that. You can see the agenda there. Want to provide a, kind of an overview of the program, how long have we been around, what have we achieved? What is life, life like for a cadet? And then I'll, I'll be taking any, any questions that you might have. You see there our, our university leadership, and I want everyone at the table and in the audience to know that we have the greatest support I, I think, possible. I'm not just saying that because I'm here, it's something I, I continued to talk about, because there is a great deal of disparity nationwide with regards to the relationships between universities and their ROTC departments. You know, some departments are very welcome entities on campus, while others are, you know, nice-to-haves, and, and other places, it's kind of wish you weren't here. That's not the case here, you know? When, when we request assistance, we receive it, and, and the decision-makers on campus have been very proactive in ensuring that they're doing what they can to ensure we have the greatest support possible. So really, really appreciate that. I wanted to talk briefly about, you know, our chain of command. So we fall under the United States Army's Cadet Command, and, and there on your left, you see Major General Chris Hughes. He's our commanding general, been in the, been in the job about a year and a half, very supportive of, of, you know, the, the learning that, that we provide. He's very passionate about leadership development. And the one common thread among the individuals you see before you is all share familiarity with Clarksville Montgomery County. We, we've all served on Fort Campbell. Colonel Oski there in the middle, he's our brigade commander. He's served there twice, as have I. I wanted to point Colonel Oski out. We, we go back multiple years, served in Afghanistan together, served in the Hundred First Airborne together, but our brigade, it's Seventh Brigade, and he oversees Michigan, Ohio, Indiana, Tennessee, and Kentucky. So those five states, thirty-eight host programs. So I wanted to kind of provide that background as we go into kind of some of our, our accomplishments and, and what he oversees. And like I said, I've, I've been here for about three years, very familiar with the community, you know, got two teenage daughters, they, they've gone to school here, my wife teaches in the community, so we're, we're big fans of Clarksville Montgomery County. With reference to kind of history and achievements of the program, one takeaway is that the professor of military science generally only serves a few years. And what's so interesting about Austin P. and the ROTC program here, we've had a long history of success, and that success continues regardless of really who's at the helm. So General Mueller, you know, continued a longstanding tradition, and I, I hope I'm, I hope I'm making you proud, but, you know, so, so there, there's a passion amongst the leaders, there, there's great interest in the community, and couple that with outstanding support from the university, and you have, you know, forty-plus years of excellence from, from the program. So commissioned over seven hundred officers. Interestingly, nationwide, about fifty percent of cadets will earn a commission and then go on to serve in the active duty. Here at Austin P., that number's much greater. Over the past five years, we've averaged about eighty-five to ninety percent of our cadets serving in active duty, and, and this is kind of an active-duty community with Fort Campbell right down the street, so we're really proud of that. The MacArthur Award, that recognizes the top program within the brigade, so that's one, you know, one of the eight top programs in the nation. And interestingly, the award's only been around for twenty-six, I think twenty-seven years. So to, for Austin P. to, to have earned that seven times, that's quite an accomplishment, and we hope to bring another award home this year. So to, to be determined. Our commission mission, you know, the United States Army invests significant funds in each ROTC program, and they want to see kind of a return on their investment. So they assign you a mission, and, you know, a couple of years ago, numerous universities across the land received what they called non-viability letters, and it was kind of a, you know, a smack on the, on, on the hand, hey, start producing. And I wanted to share with you that really in the past, you know, twenty years, every year, we've, we've met and exceeded mission. So that says a great deal about the strength of the program. One of the great benefits we have is we can be very selective in who we bring in, and when you can have that type of high standards on the front end, it just turns out a much better product on, on the back end. And we want to be proud of every cadet who commissions from Austin P. because we, as cadre, know the great responsibility they're going to shoulder, shoulder upon entering service. It's interesting, having, having been here a few years, just met with a former cadet two days ago, he just got back from a year in Korea, a couple weeks ago, met with a cadet who just got back from nine months in Egypt. We've got multiple cadets deployed and, and theaters around the globe, so it's interesting to, to, you know, stay in touch with them and realize how quickly they go in, into service. And then recently, we were recognized by College Magazine as one of the top ten programs in the nation, and I brought that up because in addition to the MacArthur Award, that was a separate set of criteria, external to the military, and really, there is some, some major hitters in that list, MIT, the Citadel, VMI, historic military, senior military colleges. So for Austin P. to be there, we are really proud of that. This quad chart here, I wanted to briefly cover. We average just over a hundred cadets, and, you know, about seventy-five percent male, twenty-five percent female, give or take. The diversity, we want to focus on because we want, and the Army wants, its officer corps to mirror the enlisted corps, to mirror the nation. And, and so what we're charged with doing is, to the greatest extent possible, reflect your campus. And, and I believe that we've, we've made great strides in that area, we're very proud of the accomplishments there. We want anyone, whether they be a student at Austin P., whether they be a student in a surrounding high school, regardless of, you know, gender, race, et cetera, et cetera. We want them to be able to see our program and see themselves as being able to succeed there. And, and I think the, the cadets have really taken ownership of this. We have a cultural outreach program, we're partnered across campus with various organizations, and that, and that's something we're very proud of. We focus a, a great deal on academics. You see there our three-point-four GPA, you know, we tell them they're students first. It's greatly, you know, supported their efforts in academics. And then I, I placed in there about the four NCAA athletes. You know, we're very supportive of cadets, their holistic collegiate experience, and so we, we work with coaches, instructors, et cetera, to ensure they can, they can pursue their, their goals. Our cadre, we have six active-duty cadre, over a century of experience, great mini-combat tours amongst us, and I feel like we can really help those cadets prepare for what we know what lies ahead. You can watch the news, and everyone knows that, you know, a lot's going to be asked of these young men and women. And then we also have three federal civilian employees, a contractor, and then the university provides us with one full-time employee who is instrumental in not only continuity amongst the green-suitered cadre, but also coordinating across campus, et cetera. That bottom-left quadrant, recent highlights, so cadets receive over three hundred thousand dollars in, in federal scholarships. So the, the great thing for the university is here, the instructors are paid external to the university, and so many of the cadets are on scholarships. Nearly all of our contracted cadets are on some sort of scholarship. Our cadets focus a lot on fundraising activities, I wanted to highlight that. They usually have two major activities each semester and then a secondary activity, and then there, we talk about projecting excellence across the campus, across the community, so we're very interested in them getting involved. We train with sister universities. Each spring, we, we have a large training exercise with Martin Murray Memphis, and then we have some civic outreach activities that we, we like to do. So what's life like for a cadet? Basically, four mornings a week, they're getting up very early, and they're doing physical fitness, which, you know, is very demanding. It's, it's professionally ran, it's science-based and goal-oriented. So we know what's going to be expected then when they reach their units, so we want to make sure they're, they're prepared. They go to class two to three times a week, depending on what year they're in, to study military science. They'll learn tactics, they'll learn, you know, all the basic military skill sets, and then by the time they're seniors, we're talking about ethical decision-making, servant leadership, et cetera, et cetera. They can pursue whatever major they want. We have biology majors, criminal justice, we have nurses. So we really just support whatever major they choose, but we try to find and steer them towards something they're passionate in so that they can graduate in, in accordance with the academic timeline that kind of the Army demands, so that the Army kind of really makes sure they're academically aligned with, you know, the time it takes to, to earn a commission. The juniors will go to Fort Knox for a month and, and train, that's at advanced camp, very, it, it's, it's become much more rigorous in recent years, so that really, it's an environment that, that will cause anyone to display his or her true character, and that's really what we're looking for. And our partnership with Fort Campbell is phenomenal. General Pappas is continuing with that. We have partnerships with individual battalions, we have partnerships with different agencies and organizations on Campbell. We're able, just yesterday, we were out there at the Engagement Skills Trainer, working on marksmanship. So to have that asset right down the road is phenomenal. We, we bring leaders in all the time to conduct panels, et cetera, and it really provides our cadets with the advantage of being able to talk with lieutenants, captains, other commissioned officers and non-commissioned officers about what's life really like? What branch should I pursue? Should I go be a, a doctor, a chaplain, an infantryman? So that's, that's phenomenal partner, partnership. And then our cadets are afforded the opportunities to gain some cultural experience by traveling overseas during the summer years and serving either with that host nation's military and/or some other organization in that nation to, to gain a bit more cultural understanding. Again, I didn't want to, I didn't want to take too much of your time, but I hope I Again, I didn't want to, I didn't want to take too much of your time, but I hope I kind of provided an overview and wanted to provide a good news story. Again, I'm passionate about the program. I'm proud of the program, and I'm here to answer any questions you all might have.
Could I put you on the spot? Do you know, do you know the oath that they take by heart at the commissioning ceremony when so? I know I put you on the spot. Let me tell a story.
I do. You did put me on the spot.
I did. Well, I was thinking, I have never been at a university that has commissioning like we have. And twice a year, we have it as part of commencement. So we'll have twenty students lined up across at graduation, and they take an oath. And then after that, there's a special ceremony, commissioning ceremony. Commissioner Minnie Bear's Grinder will be the speaker in a few days. And then we present them with a coin. But share some of that oath, and then I'll finish the story.
Basically, we ask the cadets to support and defend the Constitution of the United States first and foremost. So a lot of people, especially in the past couple of years, you know, the separation between the military, you know, civilian leaders, and ultimately, they're supporting and defending the Constitution of the United States against all enemies, foreign and domestic. They're swearing to obey the orders of the President of the United States, the orders of the officers appointed over them, according to regulation and the code of, the Uniform Code of Military Justice. And ultimately, I think the reason it resonates with so many people in the crowd is you have these young men and women, many of whom are, you know, twenty-two-year-old students. And when they are in front of their fellow students, getting ready to graduate, and they're up there with their right hands raised, and they're taking that oath, I think the weight of the responsibility from that moment on, that they're going to shoulder. And again, we have cadets who graduated last year, and they're deployed right now in combat theaters.
And don't they say, "whatever the cost"?
And they know that. And to be, you know, we are an all-volunteer Army, and they know that we're an all-volunteer Army, we're an all-volunteer Army at war, and have been for going on seventeen years. And, you know, they represent less than one percent of the population. And so I think that's why it resonates so much with the crowd, because it's, you know, it's, they're growing up right then and there. And, you know, it's been interesting, again, over the last several years, to really get to see those cadets develop under kind of the tutelage of our cadre, within the walls of Austin P. And then to go see them successfully lead, you know, our nation's sons and daughters in combat, that's very rewarding.
If you haven't been to one, you need to come. And if you want to see me, that's the one time every, you can count on me crying every single time, because you can see, and one of the ceremonies, I go down each time and just thank them for their service, and this young man, really young man, had just given this oath, taken this oath, and said, "whatever it costs". And I said, "Thank you for your service", and he said, "Ma'am, I want to." You need to come.
I was impressed with the GPA of your cadets. Very good, very good.
Thank you, sir. We take it very seriously. And the one thing that everyone should know is, from the time a cadet enters as a freshman, they receive three formal counsellings every semester. So we're intimately involved, not only with their academic success, but what are they doing across campus? What are they doing for the community? What are they doing at home? What situations might be arising that we can perhaps assist with so that they don't become, you know, incidents, et cetera? You know, because as everyone in the room knows, it's very difficult to dig out of certainly academic holes. So we are intimately involved with their development throughout their collegiate years.
Any other comments or questions?
I just want to say how extremely proud I am of you and the cadets. And I was glad to hear you thank the community. This university is a tremendous supporter of that program, and I'm glad that that's continued. And Fort Campbell as well, and how they support them. So kudos to you and your cadre and all your cadets, and keep growing them. We need more in the Army.
Thank you, ma'am.
Colonel Montgomery is a Air Force ROTC graduate a long time ago. I'm humbled and honored to sit at a table with two generals and a colonel running the best ROTC program in the United States. So thank you very much for being here.
Thank you, sir.
I'd now like to recognize Trustee Jenkins, Chair of the Academic Policies and Programs Student Life Committee, to give us a report on the committee meeting yesterday.
Thank you, Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from yesterday's Academic Programs and Policies Student Life Board Committee meeting. Committee reviewed the following information items. Provost Gandy provided the fall census enrollment data. The committee reviewed and approved the following action items, which you approved today by consent. Executive Certificate in Healthcare Administration, Graduate Certificate in Project Management. The committee reviewed and voted to approve the following leadership items. Doctorate Educational Leadership, Student Code of Conduct Rules. And I might point out on the Doctorate Educational Leadership, that this is the first doctoral program at Austin P. We're so proud of that. The above items will be presented for your review and action after the approval of the Board Committee minutes. That concludes my report, and I move that the Board approve the minutes of the November thirtieth Academic Programs and Policies Student Life Board Committee as written.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
So the motion is moved by Trustee Jenkins, seconded by Trustee Mueller, that we adopt the minutes of the Academic Policies and Programs Student Life Committee. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes of the Academic Policies and Programs Student Life Committee signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Trustee Jenkins' report contained action items that we need to consider as a full board. Trustee Jenkins, do you have a motion for us?
Yes, you have before you the information regarding the proposed Doctorate Educational Leadership. By direction of the committee, I move that the Doctorate Educational Leadership be approved.
Because it's a motion of the committee, we do not need a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question on the approval of the educational leadership doctorate is on the table, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Congratulations, that's a big step for Austin P., our first doctorate. So Dr. Gandy, well done. And good luck as we carry it through to the state. I guess the hard lifting has been done already, right?
One more, one more bridge.
That's great.
You have before you the information regarding proposed Student Code of Conduct Rules. By direction of the committee, I move that the Student Code of Conduct Rules be approved.
And again, because it's a motion of the committee, we don't need a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, the question on the Student Code of Conduct Rules is on the table. Please call, do we need a roll call?
Yes.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Kanata. Oh, sorry, Trustee Carroll. Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you, Trustee Jenkins, for your report. I'd now like to recognize Trustee Nell Rayburn, member of the Audit Committee, to give us a report of the committee meeting yesterday.
Thank you. The Audit Committee meeting met yesterday, November the thirtieth, and the following information items were discussed. Internal audit reports issued between August eighteenth, 2017, and November sixth, 2017, along with a list of outstanding audit recommendations. The external quality assurance review that will take place shortly for the Office of Internal Audit. And the client satisfaction survey results from a survey that was conducted by the Office of Internal Audit. Management's assessment of risk was discussed in executive session. At this time, I move that we accept the minutes of the Audit Committee meeting. Those minutes can be found in tab B of your notebook.
Is there a second? The motion is by Trustee Rayburn, seconded by Trustee Luck. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes of the Audit Committee meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Trustee Rayburn, are there any items for the full board to consider?
There are none.
Okay, thank you very much for your report. I'd now like to recognize Trustee Atkins, Chair of the Business and Finance Committee, to give us a report of their committee meeting yesterday.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity to present my report from yesterday's Business Finance Committee meeting. The committee reviewed and approved the following action items. Consideration of the 2017-2018 October revised budget. Consideration of the campus facilities master plan. Approval of the campus property acquisitions. Approval of the university property rule. Approval of classified students in-state and out-of-state rule. Approval of institutional refunds rule. These items will be presented for your review and action in a few minutes. The committee also reviewed the following information item from Tennessee Higher Education. At the Fall Quarterly THEC Meeting, recommendations are made for state appropriations, capital projects, and student fees. These recommendations are later approved by the legislature in the spring. The preliminary information was shared with the committee. Mr. Chairman, that concludes my report, and I move that the Board approve the minutes of the November thirtieth Business Finance Committee meeting as written.
Thank you very much. Is there a second?
Second.
So the motion by Trustee Atkins, seconded by Trustee Jenkins, that we adopt the minutes of the Business and Finance Committee meeting. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of adopting the minutes of the Business and Finance Committee meeting signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes are approved. Trustee Atkins' report contained action items that we need to consider as a full board. Trustee Atkins, do you have a motion for us?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Consideration of the October revised budget for fiscal year 2017-2018 is the first item. You have before you a copy of the October revised budget for the fiscal year 2017-2018. By direction of the committee, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the October revised budget for fiscal year 2017-2018 as written.
Thank you. And because it's a motion of the committee, we do not need a second. You've heard the motion on approving the revised budget for 2017-18. Is there any discussion? Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins.
Yes.
Trustee Carroll.
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins.
Yes.
Trustee Luck.
Yes.
Trustee May.
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley.
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn.
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Thank you. The university has been engaging in a master plan revision, which was last updated in 2013. We've engaged the services of campus planning firm Dover Lidsky Mathie, who completed the 2013 master plan. Art Lidsky of the firm will provide us now with an update of the planning process.
Seeing this presentation, some of you several times, would anybody like to do it? All right. So I thought I'd do it in Mandarin today, just as a way of changing. So I did modify it a little bit, just to make it simpler, I think, and to make it a little shorter. This is a revision to the master plan, and the 2013 plan that was pretty in-depth, I think, won an award from the American School and University Magazine for its outstanding design. We'll submit again, and let's see if we can win again on that. But I think that's an annual compendium of architecture and planning that the magazine does, and I think it's a nice award. But this is a revision to that plan, and it's a revision because of a new administration at the university, a new president at the university. There is an approved strategic plan, one goal of which is to increase the enrollment to about fifteen thousand students, major land acquisition, and also a change in governance. This board is part of that change. And the whole structure of TBR, Tennessee Border Regions, and Tennessee Higher Education Commission has split that responsibility. So there's a change in the political spectrum as well. Part of our planning study was to look at how you compare to your peers in Tennessee. So we're looking at Austin P. compared to the other five universities, to the average of these universities. And we're looking at six different or seven different categories of space that THEC and TBR collect information on. And these numbers represent the space per student at each of these institutions. The numbers that are highlighted in sort of cream color, I guess it is, are the lowest in those categories. So for Austin P., you are low in classrooms, you're low in laboratories, and you're low in the library, in comparison to these other institutions. And looking at the average for the whole system, which is a hundred and sixteen square feet per student versus your a hundred and five, it's an eleven-square-foot, almost twelve-square-foot difference. When we add in the Arts and Design Building, it doesn't change the picture all that much, it just changes it by about two square feet. So in the end, multiplying that number, which is about ten now when we add in the new building, and looking at the future, when you reach your fifteen thousand headcount students, which is about eleven thousand full-time equivalent students, we're looking at over a hundred thousand square feet of new space, just to be at the average of these institutions. Bear in mind that this is a snapshot, and it's always changing. So ETSU is adding at least three new buildings to their complex, or would like to add, I should say, because they're going through the same process that you are. TSU is adding a hotel conference center and research space. TTU is Chemistry Molecular Building, and Memphis, a recreation center and School of Music. All of these, when added to this list, will change their numbers. So it's a moving target. It's just a way to sort of put it into context. Bear in mind that we're not looking to be at the average, that Austin P. has a really strong strategic plan, and that strategic plan is going to be driving the need to be well beyond that average, because it's not that important in terms of hitting that average. What's important is to create the spaces and the programs to address the strategic plan and the university's vision for the future. Part of our study was to look at classroom utilization and laboratory utilization. There are three ways to look at these types of instructional spaces. One way is to look at the number of hours per week that a room is used, and THEC has a standard of thirty hours per week to do that. Another way is to look at how often you fill the seats when the rooms are scheduled, and they have a standard for that as well. And the third way is the amount of square feet per seat. And at Austin P., almost all of your classrooms are small, on the small side of space per student, for your classrooms and your laboratories, which means, you know, if you're thinking of moving towards active learning environments, that's going to be a problem for you. Nevertheless, you are now at the, pretty close to the target for the THEC guidelines, which says that typical room should be used thirty hours per week, you're twenty-seven hours per week. And in the laboratories and studios, you're also really high. They say you should schedule your laboratories twenty hours per week, you're at nineteen. When we add the new Arts and Design Building, it doesn't change the situation very much at all. It's still, you're at capacity. And as you think of growing the enrollment, you're going to run into a real bottleneck here unless you do something about that. You know, we looked at the various aspects of the campus, from the topography, which actually, you know, you think of this campus and you think about it as a flat campus, it is not flat at all. There are some really interesting changes in the topography, some of it is subtle, some of it is dramatic. We looked at predominant building use, where the buildings are located, circulation, parking, students and... students and residents, and landscaping. This all helps us understand the nature of this campus, and as we think about the future, how we might need to modify the campus to meet the strategic plan. So, there's your academic core, and that circle represents more or less a 10-minute walk across the edges of it. All your academic buildings are within that. And as we look at new academic buildings, we want to make sure that they're pretty close to or in that circle. The bulk of your student housing is there, although you have other housing, student housing in other locations, but the predominant number of students are in that, the majority number of students are in that circle. Student life is in, almost in the center of the campus, and athletic recreation on the edge. I must say, you have, when I look at some of the small independent colleges that we have worked with, and I look at your playfields, a college of 1,800 students has more playfields than you have. And as you think about the number of students here, and as you grow the enrollment, your land, the amount of land that you have, is also a constraint to you. That's College Street. Right now, a street that is difficult to cross, and I think we're going to look for ways to improve that. And in this area that I'm showing here, possible mixed-use development, is a wonderful opportunity for you to have housing and retail and other types of spaces that will support the university, and it's right at the boundary of the downtown Clarksville. It's a great location for both Clarksville and for the university. In meeting with the variety of people on campus, the different committees and so on, and in meeting with the departments and the colleges, and looking at what the needs are, looking at the buildings and so on, we came up with a list of new construction projects. These are all listed alphabetically. We looked at buildings that needed renovation and addition, buildings that needed renovation, and a building that probably, or possibly, might be demolished. The Health Sciences, the Health Professions is the top priority now from the university, and that project has been submitted to THEC to put that into the queue for their vetting of the different projects for funding and so on. We met with each of these departments to talk about what they would need in the future and the nature of their programs as they move to make stronger programs for their students and so on. And in looking at that, there's a significant change in the amount of space that they would need to meet standards. We added spaces for collaboration, which they don't have now. We added space for classrooms, which they have now, but it's inadequate. So, they're moving from about 35,000 net assignable square feet to almost 67,000, 68,000 square feet of space, net. Bear in mind that the net is just the programmatic space, but when you're creating a building, you're adding stairwells, you're adding mechanical spaces, structure, hallways, lobbies, and so on, and that usually, for a building like this, is 60%. The net is 60% of what's called the gross, and you're going to build the gross. It also frees up, when you create this building and consolidate these departments in this one building, it vacates space in four other buildings for future use. In looking at the price for this building, since we needed to have that for the THEC submittal, construction cost at $425 a square feet is about $48 million. When you add in architects and engineers' fees, when you add in furniture and equipment and contingency and so on, it's really a $65 million project, most of which theoretically will come from the state. I say theoretically is because they are asking you to put in some money. It's 7% or 10% of the cost of that. It's also, I'm sorry, it's also about a $10 million project cost for the various renovations that might happen to those 35,000 square feet of space in those four buildings. So, let's look at what the plan might look like. And I'm going to do it basically alphabetically. It's an easy way to track it. So, A is the new Health Professions Building. It is located on Eighth Street, just north of the Math Computer Science Building, in sort of that science-related area. These four buildings are the buildings that will have vacated space, 35,000 square feet of space, which can be used for academic purposes, could be used for administrative purposes. Most likely, it'll be some combination of the two. Expansion of the library, another facility that you are low on in terms of your peers. But what should the library of the future be? As libraries transform themselves from being warehouses for books, they're becoming more interactive, much more collaborative, much more engaging, and much more exciting. And I think that's what's the future for this library, as you think about it. It's also potentially a location for a student success center, which could be merged with the library. And I think that the present location for the library is a great location. It's right in the center of the academic environment. We didn't see a reason to think about relocating it elsewhere, and so I think it's a great location for that expansion. If we're going to add new classrooms and support space, that building that I'm showing there under D is a good location for it. It's where the Marx Building is now, which is, again, center to the rest of the academic environment. Those folks that are in Marx could go into some of that 35,000 square feet of space that's vacated now temporarily, could actually go back into this building. But that is a key academic location, and it's a good one. The student success center could be in there as well, although I think the library is a better location for it. E is a, as I mentioned earlier, the location for the mixed-use development, and we're not planning that now, because that is, I think, something that the university needs to have conversations with potential developers if they're going to move in that direction. I know that there are institutions that are doing public-private developments, and that's another possibility here. So, how that happens, I think, is still to be developed, but where it happens, I think, is a good location for that to occur there. The Harville Building is housing now the bookstore, and the bookstore is moving across the street into the mixed-use development area. And when it does so, that building becomes vacant. There are about four or five different choices for who might go into that building. In my mind, it's a fabulous location, it's part of the student life area. It used to be a dining hall, it could certainly become a dining hall again. And I think that that's also part of, I'm going to talk about how, when I get to housing, which might be next. So, it's time, I think, for a really detailed housing and dining study. Something that gets into marketing, something that gets into the whole nature of dining on this campus, something that gets into the types of housing to have on campus, beyond what we can do in a master plan. And so, I think that the Harville facility can be part of that discussion, because if it becomes dining, which will release the space in the union, that becomes part of that study. I is looking at Browning Drive and Henry Street, both of which have sections that can become pedestrian-oriented. You can design it so that emergency vehicles can go on it, but you can design it so that it's not just an old street that looks like you're trying to make it pedestrian, but really make it look pedestrian. It's a safety factor, I think, in my mind, and it also makes this campus, when you think of that whole circle there, almost all pedestrian nature. J is looking at Marion Street and the need, I think, to slow traffic down. It's a city street, but in reality, it's a university street, because it's right through the middle of your campus, and almost all students, one way or the other, are crossing it either for athletics, recreation, or for parking, or for whatever else. So, I think ways, finding ways to slow traffic down is important. I think you could landscape that street, you could change the texture of that street to make it slow down the traffic. Athletic facilities, the baseball facility has been planned, I think, that's going to be moving forward, I hope, an expansion of the Dunn Center, in the same way that we expand the Foy Recreation Center. This M and N basically represent looking at College Street and finding ways to slow traffic down on that street, to make it a much more safer environment for the future. And I want to remind you that the strategic plan has a strong sense of itself and the direction for the university, and in the end, it's in your hands. So, I will open it up for any comments or questions or concerns.
Is there any thought for a men's practice basketball facility?
Yeah, and that's part of what the Dunn Center could be like, yep.
I know that's very necessary right now.
Thank you, Mr. Lidsky. By direction, Mr. Chairman, of the committee, I move to approve the Campus Facultas Master Plan as written.
You've heard the motion from Trustee Atkins on the master planning process. Is there any discussion? And I might just add, as we ask for discussion, and you hear this massive program, and there's not one question asked, that's the benefit of the committee process. There were a lot of questions yesterday in the previous meeting, so any further questions?
I have one.
Yes.
I think, I just want to confirm, I did hear, because I read some things online sometimes about, nobody's ever happy with parking, anywhere you work, or travel, or play. So, this does include a parking study of sorts for the campus.
Right now, you don't need additional parking. When I, we have a database of parking across the country at different colleges and universities. The average for public universities is 55 spaces per 100 students. The highest is 177 for 100 students. The lowest is 15 per 100 students. You're somewhere in the 80s. You have sufficient parking for your, it might be in the wrong location. And when you think about it, some of those parking spaces are great locations for a building or something else. So, I think what you need to do is consider keeping the parking that you have now and moving it to the periphery, but I don't think you need, at this point, additional parking. Normally, you need, actually, normally, you need additional parking when you reach that 15,000 level, I don't believe, given the number of spaces that you have today. It's the question of how do you manage it.
I would add to that, that I think it's a great benefit and grants to the administration. The P pickup buses, driving around campus, they're on the street all during the day, picking up students in the further-out parking lots, and just touring around, dropping them off. I think that has really enhanced parking, because we're all human, we all want to park in front of the door of the building we're going into, it's not possible. But I think that busting some students from these other parking lots over on Marion Street and around has really been an asset, especially in bad weather.
Further discussion? Hearing none, then. The question on the master planning process is on the table. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Eight yeses.
I'm reminded by President White that after our approval of your great process, Mr. Lidsky, thank you very much, goes to THEC for, I guess, final approval this spring sometime.
And then also, to, I think, the Building Commission, there's going to be a presentation of the board.
Very good work. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right. Trustees, you have before you the information for the campus property acquisition. By direction of the committee, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the campus property acquisition.
So, you've heard the motion from Trustee Atkins on property acquisitions. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. The question on property acquisition, this is on the table. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn?
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Motion carries. Motion carries, yes.
Next item, the fourth item on the agenda, is you have before you the use of the university property rule. Mr. Chairman, by direction of the committee, I move to approve the use of the university property rule as written.
Thank you, Billy. You've heard the motion on the use of the university property rule. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. The question on the use of university property rule is on the table. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn?
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Motion carries.
All right. The fifth item by the committee yesterday was the approval of classifying students in-state and out-of-state rule. And you've had before you a copy of the classifying students for the in-state and out-of-state rule. Mr. Chairman, by direction of the committee, I move to approve classifying students in-state and out-of-state rule as written.
So, thank you, Billy. You've heard the motion, then, on classifying students in-state and out-of-state rule. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. The question on the classifying of students in-state and out-of-state is on the table. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn?
Yes.
Eight yeses.
Motion carries.
All right. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Our sixth and final item from yesterday's committee meeting was, you have before you a copy of the institutional refunds rule. By direction of the committee, Mr. Chairman, I move to approve the institutional refunds rule as written.
Thank you, Trustee Atkins. You've heard the motion on the institutional refunds rule. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. The question on the institutional refunds rule is on the table. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Atkins?
Yes.
Trustee Carroll?
Yes.
Trustee Jenkins?
Yes.
Trustee Luck?
Yes.
Trustee May?
Yes.
Trustee Mueller?
Yes.
Trustee O'Malley?
Yes.
Trustee Rayburn?
Yes.
Eight yeses.
And that motion carries. Thanks, Trustee Atkins.
Mr. Chairman, that concludes the Budget and Finance Committee meeting.
Thank you very much. The Focus Act states that the student trustee must be appointed annually. I'd like to now recognize Carol Clark to provide an update on that selection process.
Good morning. I guess I'm a little too close to the mic. Information in your notebook describes the current selection process for student trustees. This process was utilized at your March meeting, when the board selected trustee Willineus as the first student to serve on this board. In order to have a student member seated at the first inaugural meeting in March, the initial selection process was very compressed, and students did not submit applications until the spring semester actually began. This year, we were able to begin the student application process and selection of finalists during the fall semester, and the names of three finalists will be presented to the board for consideration at your next meeting in March 2018. The recommendation before you today was developed as we reviewed the existing selection process. It incorporates one clarification and one recommended change. First, it clarifies the beginning and ending dates of the student member's term, something that was not specified in the original process. Trustee Willineus's term will continue until she graduates from Austin P on May 4, 2018, to head to dental school, and the new trustee's term will begin the following day. Second, the recommendation provides that the Academic and Student Affairs Committee will conduct a review of the finalists at their March meeting and submit the name of one student to the full board for approval. When the original process was established and the vote for the first student member occurred, the board had not established a committee structure that occurred later in the inaugural meeting, and I will be glad to answer any questions.
Must have been a really good explanation. So, you've heard the explanation from Carol Clark. Is there a motion on the selection process? Must have been a really good explanation. So you've heard the explanation from Carol Clark. Is there a motion on the selection process? Thank you, can I have a second? The, it is moved by Trustee Luck and seconded by Trustee May that we adopt the proposed selection process. Is there any further discussion?
Mr. Chair, I have a question.
Yes.
Whenever this is discussed at the next meeting, am I able to say anything? Like if, say I know the student, would I have to back out of the conversation? Like, how, how would that work? Do you know?
I don't think it would require you to recuse yourself, but I'll defer to the expert at the table here.
Okay. Unless you feel like you have a biased opinion. So if, if it's your brother or something like that, you might need to recuse yourself. But if it's someone that you're just generally acquainted with, that actually will give, that, that gives good information for the trustee to be able to use to decide who they pick.
Thank you.
Thank you, it's a good question. Any further discussion?
I, just a point of clarification, to be sure I understand. So there will be, in, in the, in the board committee meeting, there will, the committee will discuss the candidates and make a recommendation to the full board. Is that, is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Bless you. Anything else? Hearing none, the question is on the adopting of the proposed selection process. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this time, I'd like to recognize President White to give her report and also to report on any interim items.
Okay, I'll start with, with the report. I want to mention some things to you today that I shared with the foundation a few days ago, and a couple of you were at that meeting, so forgive the redundancy. But I think it's, it's important to talk about our culture and where we're going at, at Austin Peay. You have a copy of our strategic planning document titled, "Leading with Excellence." And the real strength of the plan is that it's not, it is not a, a plan that is going to sit on the shelf. You've already heard from Mr. Litsky that the work informed the master planning process. The work is informing our budgeting process, not the process, but the decisions that are made. I wish we had all of the resources, the time and, and the effort available to do everything that we would like to do, but we really don't. And one of the strengths of a strategic plan is that it helps you make decisions about what to do, but also make priorities when some things have to be left aside. So we are using the plan, and, and one of the things that I like also is that it, it doesn't just say that we're leading with excellence, but it says how. So we're leading with excellence. We want to lead with excellence through communication, and we've, we've started a number of initiatives to try to improve communication on campus. We talk to ourselves, and we think everybody hears what we want them to hear. But when we only talk to ourselves, there are a lot of people who are stakeholders who are not getting really clear communication. We also want to improve opportunities for people to talk among themselves and then to talk to leadership. And so we are, we're working on a, a really robust plan led by Vice President Vandermeer to improve our communication. We want to lead through excellence through enrollment growth, and you've seen that, and, and I can explain. I've, I've said it to this body before, I won't do it today, but if you would like to know where the fifteen thousand comes, I'd be happy to share that with you. It's, it's not a number that we just picked out of the air. There's a rationale behind it, and I'm happy to talk to you about it. Leading with excellence through student success, a lot of our work is work that is assigned to us by external bodies. We do a lot of reporting, we do a lot of testing. Dr. Luck and I were talking last night about data and what it means and what it doesn't mean. And I love data that helps us inform decisions, but a lot of data is, is just reporting data that other people need. But we always have to keep in mind that if our students are not successful, everything else we do is really immaterial. So leading with excellence through student success. And then, leading with excellence through sustainability, we want to be good stewards of our resources, and leading with excellence through diversity, similar to what Lieutenant Colonel Montgomery said, we need to be educating our population consistent with who our population is. And if, if we only serve folks who are able-bodied and, and we leave behind those with accessibility issues, we're not doing our jobs. So the planning process was long, but it was only the beginning, and now the work is really beginning. We are, we are having meetings with those on the ground who are tasked with moving us toward progress, and we're achieving some success. We're also finding obstacles that we didn't know were there. And so when you have those obstacles, you have to figure out, is, is, was that the wrong goal? Is that the wrong objective? Is there another way to get where we need to be? Or are we going to put the effort behind removing the barriers that we have found? And that's where we are right now. And so I use the term barriers a lot because I think barriers are to be knocked down. At my last institution, I had a committee and it was a burial removal, a burial, that, well, that's good, too. A barrier removal committee tasked with knocking those things down, because I think we do have some control over them. So one of the biggest challenges in a good organization is to be satisfied with being a good organization. And one of my favorite books I read a few years ago is Jim Collins', which is, is called Good to Great. And he says that good is the enemy of great. And that's where we are now. Austin Peay is, is, is really an excellent university. And it's been a good university for decades. And in some areas, we truly are an excellent university. I won't be really satisfied until we're an excellent university in all areas. So what we're trying to do is say, yes, that's fine, but it's not really fine. It's not good enough. And so our students deserve more, and they deserve better. Good will never be good enough. And so what we're trying to do now with, with what you're working on with us is to say, how can we really up our game? They, the students need more support and they need more connections. And, and one of the things that I, I was really proud of for trustee Willeneus, I mean, we got good news today that she's accepted into dental school. We knew she was a good student. But in addition to handling her classes this last year, she shadowed dentists in the area. She went above and beyond, was connected to the community, shadowed some folks in town who also have the military connection. So she would have an idea of what life would be like as a dentist in the Army. We need to provide those connections to our students. We need to provide more of them. Our students need better places to play and practice. And just as trustee Jenkins was asking about the Dunn Center, it's a fine place to watch a game, but we have many opportunities to improve the student athlete experience because volleyball, go volleyball, today's a great day for, for them and for the entire university. They share that space with women's basketball playing in practice, men's basketball playing in practice, and HHP, we had the chair in here just a few minutes ago. Our Health and Human Performance students have classes and labs there. We don't have enough space, so we have to solve that problem. We have one of the best bands in the southeast. They are incredible, incredible. We have about a hundred and eighty band members. They'd like to grow to two thirty. They don't have a dedicated place to practice. And, and I mean, there, there's no place. So where do they go? It has, I mean, they, they literally, they, they are, they are finding little, little pockets of places because there's no dedicated place where, where we're not parking cars or if they use the, the space in front of the Dunn Center, we have a lot of student activities there. They deserve better from us. Our medical laboratory science and rad tech students and nursing students have to have sufficient lab space to practice. We have very highly rated programs, and they are maxed out. We have many more students who would like to come. I want to grow enrollment. We won't grow if we can't take them, and we can't take them because there's no space to put them. And so we have to provide an opportunity for them to not only take their classroom work, but take their lab work. So how do, how do we get where we want to go? We talk about the, the space and the capital, but our, our strongest body, our, our most important capital is the human capital. What really makes Austin Peay special, really, is, is the attitude of we're here to help students that you find among the faculty and the staff. And when I was interviewing here more than three years ago now, I was asked, do you know that the faculty and staff salaries at Austin Peay are the lowest in the state? And so we have been resolved to change that. And so in the last two years, we have put six point seven million dollars into salary increases. Now, the reason I bring that to you, this is not a compensation discussion, but I wanted to tell you where the pressures are. I'm really proud of that, and we're retaining people we might not have retained otherwise, and they are outstanding. But they are paying a price for it. They don't have enough people. We're not, we're, instead of hiring people, we are putting more money in their salaries, which means they are doing more work. They work long hours. There was a study done, I just got the preliminary results this week. Our faculty are working between fifty and sixty hours a week. And, and people think faculty just teach, they do so much to prepare for teaching, and a lot of their work is even outside the classroom. And so it's, I want to continue to up our support for our human capital, but not just in salaries. At some point, we're going to have to start hiring people to help them do the work so that we don't, we don't lose them because they're just overburdened. So we're pushing hard to be uniformly and consistently great, and I'm going to be asking you all for help, because it's really exciting. But there are pressures along with it. So what will help us really be great? Well, well, one of, one of the, the ways we're going to be great is, is because we've got your help. I really have a good relationship with the Tennessee Board of Regents. The Regents supported us, I had no issues with the Regents. But they oversaw forty-six institutions. You picked us when the governor picked you and said, yes, I'm tied to some other institutions, but Austin Peay's my priority. I'm going to give everything I can, my energy, my talent, my, my intellectual capital, and, and more, to Austin Peay. That is a resource for us that we didn't have before. We had a good visit, and I wanted to, to say thank you for the good visit that we had with the SAC COC team when they looked at the governance change. We had such a good report from the site team that came. And I'm, I'll be leaving to attend the SAC COC annual meeting in Dallas this, this weekend and up through Tuesday, where they will vote on our governance change. So we talk about accrediting bodies, and I think some of you know the significance. And of course, we have disciplinary accreditation in some areas. So, for instance, we just got a reaffirmation of accreditation for our art and design program. And that, that's really important. We are accredited in social work, and we just were reaffirmed there. That's really important. But SAC COC is a regional accrediting body, and there are several across the United States and institutions who are not regionally accredited, accredited. Their students cannot get financial aid. So if we were not to be accredited by SAC COC, our students could not get student loans. It's impossible to operate. We have more Pell eligible students, the percentage-wise, at Austin Peay than any other public institution in the state of Tennessee. That means we have more students who need financial help as a percentage than any institution in Tennessee. So that is critical to us. So we can't really, it cannot be overestimated how important SAC COC is to us. So we are expecting a, a good, a, a good vote from the full commission because we got such a good recommendation from the site visit. You were part of that, because they interviewed you. And I heard from some colleagues and also from the SAC COC people that not every, not every visit went as well as ours did. And so they, they bragged on our trustees, so thank you very much for that. They'll also meet soon to talk about our bid to be a doctoral institution. And they'll also come to Clarksville in the spring to review Outlaw Field. And that's to check Outlaw Field as, as a, an educational site, teaching site, for our aviation program. So they will be on and off our campus several times in the next few months, and you may be called to visit with them. So part of, of being great, of course, is our new master plan that will drive our decisions for physical space. Just, just to kind of reiterate that the plan is important. It will be driving our decisions, but this is a long-range plan. The arts and design request to the state was on the list for thirteen years before it was approved. Now, I don't plan to wait thirteen years, because I, I, I'm not a patient person, as, as my team will tell you. Patience is not my virtue. I know that stuns you, Dr. Luck, but, you know, we have to make the case. And I think when you saw the chart, that we have less assignable space per student than anybody in Tennessee other than MTSU, we have a strong case. But it will take some time to get those buildings. And so just help us be creative. We can repurpose some space, we can use some pedagogical tools to use hybrid instruction. We also have some capacity at Fort Campbell, and we are really trying to tear down the barriers between the downtown campus and the Fort Campbell campus. So our students who are eligible to get on post can take classes there, and, and the students who are based there can take classes down here. So that's, that's one way we will do it. You've seen our new academic programs, and you've approved those, so I won't go there again. I just wanted to leave you with a couple of other things. Research really is important. We're not a research one institution, which means we're not, we're not all about research. We don't hire researchers and hope they can teach. If you're a faculty member at Austin Peay and you can't teach, you won't be here very long. That you have, that, that's a no-brainer. We're not willing to give up instruction for research. But research is important. It informs teaching. It also helps students to understand the importance of inquiry. And so in two thousand and fourteen, fifteen, our faculty and staff obtained externally funded grant awards to a total of two point nine million dollars, which is very low for an institution our size. Last year, it was two point, or two thousand fifteen, sixteen, it was about two point six million. This last year, it was four point five million, and it will go up again this year. So last year, we had about a seventy percent increase. Now, again, we're not trying to be the University of Tennessee or the University of Memphis, but it really is important that we do enough research, that our students have an opportunity to do work with us. It also helps support graduate students, and it helps us attract a kind of faculty member we might not get elsewhere. So we're making great strides among the faculty and staff for research grants, so I'm excited about that. So we've had several references today about athletics. And that's really important to me, too, and kudos, kudos to A.D. Ivy. And, and I have to go back to President Hall and A.D. Vandermeer, Vandermeer at the time. Getting that stadium was pivotal, and I had nothing to do with that. I walked in and they were, they, I, I, I walked up to a sinkhole, you know, so they, but they were already starting construction, and I just got lucky to get here at that time. So they put in a, a, a very physical representation of the university's commitment to athletics. And then I was able to get A.D. Ivy to come in and work with us to, to put together a new team to leverage the opportunities that we had based on our new building. So I mentioned athletics because we, we had become, in, in the, the nation, a footnote for the wrong reason. And so not only am I not patient, I'm a sore loser, as I've found out. And I love the student athletes. I love them when they're not winning. I love them when they're winning. They are, they, first of all, they're students. They're not athlete students. They're students who are athletes. And they suffer when they're the laughing stock, and we're just not going to, we're just, we're just not going to have that. So our volleyball team today plays UCLA after winning the championship, and they are so fun to watch, so if you can, please do. But they're having fun themselves, and they have pride in themselves. What I saw in the football team is a pride in themselves for just saying, you know, we're going to turn this thing around. Yes, we did it. Yes, we did it. And they worked so hard. And I'm seeing it, you know, I'm so excited about basketball and the women's basketball team. They just tore it up this week, and they, again, so fun to watch. And I was walking across the UC this week, and number five, Maya came, she said, are you coming to the game? Are you coming to the game? And I said, yes, I'm coming to the game. And when I, when I watched her on the court, she was, she's just a freshman, she's new. It was exciting, but when she was sitting on the bench, she was just as much of the culture change as the ones who were running across the court. She was getting them, she was moving, I mean, you, there was, she was like vibrating with energy. That culture for athletics is what we want in everything we're doing. If you go to a concert, you'll see it. If you go to a theater- If you go to a theater performance, you'll see it. If you go to a debate, you'll see it. So you all kind of get excited because we're an athletics society, and that's the visible part. But the reason I wanted to end with it is it's all over campus, and it's not just in athletics. People are excited about being here and what they're doing for our university, and I'm proud of them. And so, and I will say, our women golfers shot a program record low in 36 holes their last sport, their last tournament. We have tennis players and track team and golfers who never get any recognition, and they practice just as hard as anybody else, and I'm really proud of them. So it's a good time to be here. Thank you for being part of the success. Thank you in advance for saying, well, sure, we'll help you do that when I bring you these really heavy things to do in the future. I appreciate you for being part of our journey to go from good to great. We have, I was thinking we don't, actually. There is a, it's on, I don't have anything that anybody needs to vote on, but I will, I will show you. If you look at the information items in the back of your book, beginning in tab B1, you will see there's always, we will always bring you a list of contracts. If you have any questions about any specific contract, please let me know. Those are a matter of public record as well. If you look at B2, you'll look at the State Building Commission actions. And you know what? I do need to give you one little update there. The Focus Act allowed us to sever from Tennessee Board of Regents for procurement and for oversight of construction projects. And we, along with ETSU, requested the permission from THEC to sever in their November meeting. And we were the only two that went forward on construction projects, and then we were one of three. Tennessee Tech joined us as well with ETSU and Austin P. to request severance for procurement. Those were voted on and approved, and beginning with the end of the fiscal year, we'll start taking over oversight of all of our construction projects. And I want to point out Mark Bruner in the back. Would you wave your hand there? So Mark is an architect. He's been on campus a long time, came to us from Ohio four years. You've been here as long as I've been here, so it's a long, it's a long time. He is well-qualified, and he's been working with the State Architect, with the State Building Commission, and he and his team will be in charge of all of our capital projects after that severing date, and then work also with the State Building Commission. The last point there that we have an opportunity to sever from TBR is on data, and we will be requesting that in the middle of the year next year to take effect with the new fiscal year. Any questions about any of these? Thank you so much.
Thanks very much, Dr. White. As, before we close out, I'm kind of reminded as I look at the words leading through excellence, and it's, it means something here at Austin P. It's not just a slogan, and I think all of us on the board would agree with me that we are honored to be a part of moving this university or helping you to move this university from good to great in all aspects. And we're also very, very thankful for the leadership that you provide and the leadership that your team provides. It's an exciting time to be at Austin P. and to be involved, so thank you. With that, I would remind the board members that our next regularly scheduled meeting is March 8 and 9, 2018. And I now move that the meeting adjourn. Can I have a second? It is moved and seconded by Trustee Atkins that we adjourn the meeting. All those in favor, say aye. Is anyone opposed? And with that, Merry Christmas, Happy Holidays, and let's go P. We are adjourned.